Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call and order the school board meeting for Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District 13, Board Meeting for Tuesday, April 28th, 2015. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lori, roll call if you would, please.
Nichols.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Landwear.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Thank you. We've got a very busy meeting tonight, lots of exciting things going on, so we're looking forward to that. We'll start with our mission statement. The Columbia Heights Public Schools, "Create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success." Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And as I mentioned, we have lots of fun stuff going on tonight. We're going to start with our Heights Lights. The Board is going to honor the high school students who placed at the Minnesota Scholastic Art Award Show. And to get things started there, with 90 years of history behind and a bright future ahead, the Scholastic and Art and Writing Awards has grown to be the nation's longest-running, most prestigious recognition initiative for creative teens, and the largest source of scholarships for young artists and writers. Since 1923, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards have recognized the vision, ingenuity, and talent of our nation's youth, and provided opportunities for creative teens to be celebrated. Each year, increasing numbers of teens participate in the program and become part of our community, young artists and writers, filmmakers and photographers, poets and sculptors, along with countless educators who support and encourage the creative process. Students across America submitted 255,000 original works during our 2014 program year. Of those, Minnesota entered 2,900 pieces, the largest submission year we have had to date. The awards are presented to the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers, whose mission is to identify students with exceptional artistic and literary talent and present the remarkable work to the world through the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Students receive opportunities for recognition, exhibition, publication, and scholarship. Awards alumni employ their creativity to become successful in any number of ways. Leaders in the field, including journalism, medicine, finance, government, and public service, the law, science, design, and more. Student submissions are blindly judged by leaders in the visual and literary arts. Jurors look for works that exemplify the award's core values, originality, technical skill, and the emergence of personal voice or vision. And tonight, we have several people that we would like to recognize. And we'll just think what we'll do is ask you guys to do is I'll just, I've got your certificates, I'll read your name, I'll have you come up, we'll get pictures, and we'll have everybody shake your hands and things like that, so. Is that all right, doing that way?
No, I have a voice to show you.
Oh.
Would Mrs. Scully, would it be okay if we did that right after we did the certificates? And then, we'd like to have you come and present to us, that would be wonderful.
So we get to go up here?
Yes.
We have several people that are being recognized tonight. I see three young ladies there, so I'm going to go through their names in the order that I have them. When your name matches a certificate, that's when you get to come up, okay? I know Whitney, but I don't know the other two ladies by name, so. All right, so Adil Mubark, but he's being recog- he or she? He is being recognized for receiving an honorable mention at the Scholastic Art Show. Quincy Gross is recognized for receiving a silver key and honorable mention at the Scholastic Steve Lee is recognized for receiving honorable mention at the Scholastic Art Show. Michelle Johnson is recognized for receiving a silver key and honorable mention at the Scholastic Art Show. Come on up. She is recognized for receiving a gold key at the Scholastic Art Show. Come on up. Tyria Carroll, not here, recognized for receiving a gold key and honorable mentions at the Scholastic Art Show. Marcos Ferrer, Ferraris, not here, recognized for receiving a gold key and silver key, gold and silver key at the Scholastic Art Show. Whitney Meyer is recognized for receiving gold keys, honorable mention, and American Vision Award at the Scholastic Art Show. Okay, Diane, you can help me with this name. I know this person is not here. It's Sitlali Soriano Cortez, recognized for receiving a silver key at the Scholastic Art Show. Natasha Archer, recognized for receiving honorable mention at the Scholastic Art Show. And Rukia Abdi, recognized for receiving honorable mention at the Scholastic Art Show. And even though they're not here, maybe a round of applause for those people as well. And then Diane, I think we were going to have, give you a chance to speak, and if you wanted to, come on up.
Yes. Go ahead.
Hi.
All right. These works have been hanging up over in the high school art gallery for the last couple of months, and so we literally wanted to bring them over here so that you can see what they won and why they won. So Whitney, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Whitney. So I got three gold keys, and one of them was American Vision's nominee. Sorry, I'm saying, it's so weird. This one is called Memories. Thank you. Does this work? Okay. This one is called Memories. It was the American Vision's nominee and gold key. This is it.
And these two?
And the one on the far left is A Moment of Self-Reflection, and it got a gold key. And the one on the left is called Emma, and it got a gold key.
And to realize that there are only five American Vision Awards given in the state, and so Whitney got one for that piece, along with a gold key. And so those five, the five pieces that are chosen from the 2,900 entries, best exemplify what's going on in Minnesota, and went on to national to then be recognized there. And then Michelle?
This is my picture. This is my, this is my picture that got a silver key, and I also got an honorable mention, but that painting is at home. And it's called Factory, because I was downtown taking a whole bunch of random shots of the building with smoke and stuff, but then I cropped it, and I thought it looked cool. And my photography teacher liked it, so.
This one's mine, and it's called What Is My Future? I wanted to show what I personally felt about college coming up as a junior. And this one won me a gold key and also a scholarship for a summer program at MCAD College.
And the value of $3,300.
Nice, very nice.
For two weeks.
Go ahead.
This one is by Marcos Ferreira. I forget the title in that one, right there. This one was to show how technology kind of affects child, children now, and he also submitted it for a different award. He didn't win, but it was just kind of through technology and how it's advancing, and it affects our children. And yeah, show it over here.
And then the last one is an acrylic painting from Tyria Carroll. And her work, she's a senior, and she's going to submit her AP portfolio in a week and a half. And so her work is about using the human form, and also about, this piece in particular is about technology. So we wanted to show you some art tonight.
Well, I can say for one that I've been hearing lots of things about the art program and some of the successes we see in our board with packets and things like that. It's nice to really see the stuff up close and personal. It's beautiful work. It's, nice job. Congratulations to everybody, those that aren't here, as well as those that are.
We'll applaud them tomorrow morning during.
Make sure they know that we clap for them.
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
We will.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming.
John.
Oh, hang on, hang on. No, you thought you were going to get away.
I just really wanted to thank you for bringing these in and sharing these with us. I tried to get over to the high school to see some of it, but I don't get over there anywhere near as often as I like, and you have some amazing pieces here. So I, thank you so much for all you do, because you bring a vision to the, you bring your view of the world to us, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
That's nice. Moving along, Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence. First on the list is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
I'll move that forward.
Second.
Lori, second. By Laura, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Opposed? Motion passes. Announcements, May 12th, Tuesday, 5:00 PM, Subcommittee on Policy Superintendent's Conference Room. May 12th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting in the community room. May 19th, Tuesday, 5:30, school board listening session in the Family Center. May 19th, 6:00 PM, school board work session, community room. May 25th, Monday, no school, Memorial Day, district offices are closed. May 26th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting in the community room. Next on the list, correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mr. Chair members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. Moving along, Communication to the Board. Citizens and employer representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Okay, we will move forward with the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report. Could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
I'll move that forward.
Is that Molly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes. And now acknowledgements of contributions. Could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
Second.
Motion by Ted. Second by Laura. If you haven't heard me read enough already tonight. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $28,245.81. The detailed background monetary, a donation of $1,000 was made to the Columbia Heights School by Columbia Heights Activity Fund for the New York Study Seminar. A donation of $500 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by Education Minnesota Local 710 for the New York Study Seminar. A donation of $500 was made to Columbia Heights High School by Italian-American Club for the New York Study Seminar. Donation of $1,000 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by All Furniture for the New York Study Seminar. A donation of $500 was made to the Columbia Heights School by Silverwood Symphony Band for the New York Study Seminar. A donation of $12,000 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by Columbia Heights Boosters Club for the New York Study Seminar. A donation of $1,000 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by Northeast State Bank for the New York Study Seminar. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program. Anonymous, $5,000. Midwest Vending, $250. Malcolm Watson, $1,500. Andrea Cowell, $35. Grant Nichols, $300. Jean Heistercamp Richards, $50. Heather Sweeney Swainy, $75. Kathleen Anderson, $10. Michelle DeWitt, $50. Marsha Bergman, $25. Priscilla Tibboto, $50. Robin Rice, $10. Jennifer Blake, $20. Carl Lightbody, $20. Louine Savadara, sorry about that, $50. Pamela Myers, $50. Heather Coop, $50. Joseph Hervella, $100. The Kopp Family Foundation, $1,750. Merrily Olin, $100. Wayne Kootsky, $50. William Caverly, $100. Dean Miley, $50. Anne O'Neil, $100. Glenda Glor, $50. Marlo Hammerston, $40. Amera Price Financial, $1,100. Michelle Young, $10. Kelsey Lehman, $10. Christina McCarthy, $10. Laura Martenson, $20. Jeanette Marr, $10. Deb Carroll, $10. Joy Ballasis, $50. Regina Skoye, $20. Teresa Small, $20. Michelle Wonders, $50. Value in Kind, donation of supplies to Columbia Heights High School, Columbia Academy, and Highland Elementary from Beth Solomon for destination imagination and testing, estimated value at $215.81. Donation of paper to Valley View Elementary from Mark Emme for school needs, estimated value of $490. Donations of supplies to Valley View from Kate Colapi for student needs, estimated value of $20. Donations of books to Highland Elementary from Louine Savadara for student needs, estimated value $215.81. Total fiscal year 2014-2015 monetary contributions to date, $85,995.68. And to move this forward, we need a roll call vote.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Landwear.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much to everyone. Next on the agenda is reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Molly.
I had an opportunity to go over to Highland Fine Arts Night a couple of weeks ago, as well as a few Varsity Track Meets, and then I participated in the Policy Subcommittee meeting last week on Tuesday. On last Wednesday, I was at the Phase 3 Training for school board members in St. Cloud, and then also had an opportunity to see the musical on Saturday evening. Thank you.
Lori?
I have no report this week.
Ted?
I just want to report how blown away I am by this generosity and all these gifts. So thank you so much, everybody. I was at the chair meeting prior to this, and Lions meetings, and Chamber of Commerce meetings.
Grant?
Attended the Sub-Policy Committee, and went to Phase 3 Training up in St. Cloud last Wednesday, and went to a Varsity baseball game, which they killed the team, so it was pretty cool. And that's about it.
Laura?
Well, I attended the Fine Arts Night over at Highland, and it's really great to walk around and see what the kids are doing, what they're thinking, what they're planning, what they're dreaming of, you know? So that was, it's always pretty awesome, very well attended, and the baked goods are amazing. So, thank you very much, PTO. Yes. That's it.
I'll try to be brief as well. I had the privilege and the honor of attending the Teacher of the Year Award Celebration for Coleman Nemirov. Congratulations to him. I also snuck into the Highland Fine Arts Festival for a little bit. It was fun walking up and down the halls, you know, the beautiful art that the kids have created. I have also been able to attend a couple baseball games, both the JV and the Varsity. And the policy meeting last week, I actually sat and watched for a little bit, my first time I've ever watched lacrosse last week, and it was an amazing sport, and I'm going to make it a point to go back to that. It was really fun to watch. Attended the synchronized swimming meet today, the chair meeting prior to this, and that's it. And we'll move forward. The Superintendent's Report.
Mr. Chair members, in difference of time, I'm going to defer my report tonight.
Okay, cool. Next up on the agenda is Education Minnesota Week of Action. The board will present with information on Education Minnesota Week of Action, and I'm guessing neither of you are Carl, so Chris and Angela.
Good evening, members of the school board administrators, and our Columbia Heights community. We are here tonight representing Columbia Heights Federation of Teachers Local 710. My name is Carissa Orin. I teach early childhood special education at the Family Center, and I serve as First Vice President on our Local 710 Executive Council.
My name is Angela Knoll, and I teach 3rd grade at Highland Elementary School and serve on the Local 710 Executive Council as the Second Vice President. Next week, we will join with our colleagues across the state to celebrate educators and the work that we do to support, educate, and empower students of all kinds in our communities. This celebration is on Tuesday, May 5th, from 2:30 to 5:00 PM, down at the 49th Avenue Pedestrian Bridge that crosses Central Avenue. Members of our local will be wearing these, gold and blue shirts, and holding signs that proclaim "Proud to Teach in Heights," and sharing our commitment to our students and the families as they pass by.
Our teachers know that we cannot do the job we do without the support and commitment to excellence from our administration, our school board, and our community. We are here tonight to express our appreciation for your ongoing support and collaboration with Local 710 and our teachers. We truly are proud to teach and work in heights. On behalf of, on behalf of the Executive Council and the entire Local 710 membership, we present this certificate of appreciation to the Columbia Heights School Board for their ongoing support of our teachers and our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys want a picture?
Well, sure. We're waiting. Cool, sure.
She seems very particular about where we stand.
Oh, yeah. I can't. Yeah. The golden, the same image.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much. I can speak only for myself, but I truly appreciate everything that you guys do as educators. It's a job I would not really want to do, so I, I have, on more than one occasion, said that I'll take a burning building over being in a teacher in a classroom any day of the week, so. So I truly respect what you guys do.
Thank you all.
Okay. Anything else? We will move forward to the High School Study Seminar Update. The board will present with an update on the High School Study Seminar to New York. We have Principal Robleski, Mr. Palmer, Ms. Scully, and it's Ian, okay.
Board Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, good evening. Little, little less than a year ago, myself and Director Burkus came before you, talking about a work seminar trip to New York. And with your approval back in May, with the assistance of Mr. Palmer, Ms. Scully, Superintendent Kelly, we moved forward with a, a work seminar and an experience of a lifetime for our kids. And what sets us apart, as I'll turn it over to our teachers and students, is that our mission statement of worlds of opportunities for our kids, and as tonight, as you read off, Chair Larkin, the support of our community for the donations for our trip. I truly believe that we do, at Columbia Heights, offer our students worlds of opportunities. And tonight, we get a short snip, snip of what they experienced on this work seminar in New York. So at this time, I'll turn it over to our staff and students.
Do you want to do the slideshow? Powerpoint. So, this one first? Yeah. I have some on my phone. I don't know what they put in their PowerPoint.
So we have a slideshow of some photos from our trip, and we'll talk a little bit about the experiences that we had as we go through. First, we just wanted to show you about our bus trip. How many hours was that?
24 hours.
24 hours on a bus. The kids were wonderful. They were excellent on the, on both buses, and they made the travel pretty quick. Our first stop that we made was to the 9/11 Museum. We felt that it was important, it's an important part of the country's history, and we wanted our students to experience that memorial and visiting there. So on the left, you can see the photo with polos donated by the mayor, and Ian here is displaying one of them tonight. It says "City of Columbia Heights, City of Peace." Thank you, Ian. And the following picture is in Times Square later in the evening. Ms. Scully, do you want to talk about these?
This was an interesting experience, because I wanted to see how many kids got out of bed at 5:30 in the morning, and then we went out on photo shoots in the morning. It was dark when we went out, and then we got to see the city change by the light coming up. And so some of these shots are of that morning experience. We went to different places. We saw Fifth Avenue. We saw Times Square in the daytime, changing into night, or night, night to day, and Rockefeller Center. We went on the subway, just neighborhood scenes, what people did in the morning at 5:30, going to work, everyday people. Down to the Intrepid, that's the photo on the left, and then we went down to the 9/11 Memorial in the morning. And that was pretty chilling for me, because most of the people, Duane was there. Dwayne was there on that morning, and most of the people were everyday workers, construction workers, and going down to the 9/11 on the subway just kind of really hit home with me as far as what would that have been like to be under the ground and knowing what was going on up above, or not knowing what was going on up above, so.
On our first full day that we had, we had some college visits where each, the art group and the band group visited two separate colleges and kind of talked about their areas of focus in both of those, talked about admissions process, study abroad opportunities for them, what the, at least for the band kids, what kind of practice is involved. It was a lot.
We went to NYU, Cooper Union, and Parsons New School, as it says. Then the band and choir kind of, the band and visual art kind of split on those days, and so we went to the Metropolitan Museum of Art. And on Wednesdays, we went to the Cloisters Museum, which is a part of the Metropolitan Museum of Art, but it's a very, it's a medieval collection, and so the kids got to see firsthand, and our AP Art History people got to be tested by our, our docent who gave us the tour. She was wonderful. And then we went and we climbed a cathedral. And you see that we went, I had to include this because this was just precious, this photo on, this photo on the right. Joy doesn't know I have this, but, we climbed up inside the wall, inside the wall, 125 feet. So, we climbed up inside the wall, and Superintendent Kelly was leery about doing this, but she, she went for it, and we climbed up inside the wall, we came up, and we came out at the top of the first set of stained glass windows, and the kids could see firsthand about the stained glass windows. We climbed up further, we came out at the second story. We climbed up further, we were up at the ceiling, and we're at the ribbed vaults, which create the top of the structure of the Gothic cathedral. Then, we climbed up further, and we were on top of the ribbed vaults. That's what this picture is, because you don't get to see the top of a ribbed vault. I've never seen it in my life. And then, we walked outside on the roof, and we were 125 feet in the air overlooking Manhattan, and that was our group that made it up there. Three of our students didn't quite make it all the way up, so we kind of left little breadcrumbs on the way up.
We just have a few more shots of, out in front of the cathedral on the right, a exhibit at the Metropolitan Museum of Art, featuring Gabe Smirtnik in the back, and then the, the new building on the, the Twin Towers side, is it called the Freedom Tower, or, okay.
Another day, we did the Museum of Modern Art, and so we did a hands-on workshop. So this picture on the right are our kids in a studio experience along with Superintendent A studio experience, they went and toured and had a docent tour before the museum was open. They got to stand with Starry Night without having to look through people, and that was precious. That was just priceless. And so then they went down, and they had a, about an hour of hands-on art-making, and we did a critique at the end, and that's what the photo on the right-hand side is. And then we saw Starry Night, like I said, just by ourselves, our own group, and sitting in front of a Jackson Pollock.
After the college visit days, the band curriculum centered around three facets of music-making. There's a few photos here with two of our clinicians out of three. The first day, we focused on kind of the Broadway perspective, and that is the fellow on the far left. He's a pit musician and conductor, and we got to rehearse with him, and then a singer, a Broadway singer came in and performed with the ensemble. We followed that up with a performance of Wicked that evening, and we had an opportunity to do a talkback session with, I think there was a customer, some of the actors, some of the pit musicians, a lot of people, a good blend of folks from the show. We spent a day, the morning, working with a man named Ruben on the right there at Hunter College, and so we, they got to experience kind of what a collegiate-level conductor, how they rehearse an ensemble, and we followed that up with an evening back at Hunter College, observing the symphonic orchestra there rehearse. And our final perspective was New York Philharmonic, and so I don't have a photo of him, but we worked in the morning with a clinician from the New York Philharmonic, a conductor, and then in the evening, we went and, and to a concert by the Philharmonic.
And like it says, our arts kids make us proud.
So, my, my name is Ian McKay. I'm a concert choir, well, yes, concert choir, but concert band student. I play tuba, and I went on the New York trip. Something that I really appreciated about having those different experiences is that each conductor conducted differently and achieved good results each way, and I, I thought that it was like one set thing, but some conductors would tackle things differently from others. For example, the one from Broadway told us to just play this part over and over and over until, it was like drilled into our muscle memory, where another conductor that had us playing a technical passage told us how to do it differently and broke it down separately, and then we played it well, equally well both times, but it was a different method, which I thought was really cool, how professionals are doing it differently from each other.
I am also with, I also went with the people to, to the New York trip, and I'm also in concert band, and, but I was mostly with the art students. I think it was a really good experience to go to the MoMA. I think that really, like, gave me a different look on art. Like, it was more modern art, and like, I saw a lot of different things that I didn't think people would really show to be art, but it really, like, sparked ideas in my head, for me, what people, like, think of as art, and I just thought the whole trip in general was like, I definitely did see a lot that I did not expect to see, and it was a really good experience for me, see some of the stuff there, so.
Any questions?
Are we going to do this again?
Yes.
It's, it's a lot of hard work. I, I can see putting, putting all of this together and getting all these elements in place, and, and it sounds like you got so much more out of it than, 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 that we, we expected. I mean, we expected it to be a great experience, but it sounds like there was more, something more fundamental that came from this trip, and I think this is, this is good stuff. Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm so glad you had this opportunity. I think back to my high school years and actually seeing things and taking trips like this is always going to stick with you the rest of your life, so.
I'd like to add that going to New York is like learning a language in an immersion school. You're, you're, you're in the culture, and it's all around you, and you really pick things up a lot faster, you really learn things a lot faster, and things in here work differently than learning it outside of the classroom, or New York, or at a college there, than if it was removed and brought here or anywhere else.
Chair Palmer, I think we have a footprint for the future, kind of with the, the mantra of see, do, learn.
Bill, any questions or comments?
I just think it's really cool, you know? I think kids deserve to do this, you know? One, 22 years ago, we, we did it, you know? We take trips, and I think it's one thing to experience, one thing to see it on the internet, but you have to, you have to go there, you have to see it, so, I think it's awesome. So, I hope we keep on doing this.
One of the telling stories to me was Louis Karchi, who was going to Princeton, and he showed up in my room this year. I'd never had him before, and he said to me, "Ms. Scully, I went to Princeton." I said, "Louis, why are you in my class?" And I said, "You've never taken an art class from me before?" And he said, "I want to take AP Art History," because, he said, "I went to Princeton, and I went in the museum there," and he said, "I realized I didn't know what I was looking at. I realized I didn't know everything." So he went on this trip. He went back to Princeton about three weeks ago, and he came back and he said, "Oh, my gosh, they have Monets there, and it's a Gothic, it's a Gothic structure," and I thought, "Yes, this is what teachers live for, Louis."
Just, I know Superintendent Kelly has something to add to it. One of the things that I've heard consistently, not necessarily tonight, but in people that I've talked to, is, is how good, how good the kids were, as far as well behaved and things like that. And that, as a parent, that makes me proud, and I'm sure it does you as well as their, their educators, but, so we took a trip that was a, a learning trip, were able to have some fun with it, and the kids all were awesome representatives of our school district, so that's, that's nice to hear.
Are you done? Okay. Well, I would just like to thank the staff and the students for all that I learned on the trip, because when we first started out, it was about see, do, learn, and an itinerary, and by the time I got off the, the bus, I reconnected with high school students, was delightful. The students were angels. I mean, I said that repeatedly, exemplary, and to the point that we, when we were in the museums, the questions they were asking about the paintings, other people were thinking they were college students and wishing that their students would ask questions like that. I have to admit that although I fell asleep on the bus for some of the movies, I did buy them later so I could catch up with you, and I learned some wonderful slang about the way the kids talk now, so. I want to thank Director Burkus, who was also on the trip over there, for being there, and I, I want, I want to thank the donors, but most importantly, I want to thank the kids, because I came back reinvigorated from everything that you did with me, and I want to thank for me in expanding my learning, so thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is College Possible. The Board will be presented with information on College Possible. Principal Robleski, and you have someone, will you introduce?
I do. Board Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board. Tonight, we have a guest from one of the programs we have at our high school called College Possible, which supports our college and career readiness benchmarks and where we are headed in the future with our high school. We've had this partnership for the last eight years. Ms. Maggie Wells will present tonight some of the, the great statistics that we have with this partnership. We hope to continue partnering and collaborating with College Possible and focusing on our college and career readiness at the high school. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Maggie Wells.
Hi, and thank you so much for letting me join you today. We are absolutely thrilled at College Possible to have been a partner with Columbia Heights High School since 2008, and it's really an honor to be with you, and it's really an honor to serve your high school students and support them in their college-going futures. We have benefited so much in our partnership with Columbia Heights High School from the support of administrators and staff and teachers and the support of the district, and I can't say enough about how much of an impact that makes in our ability to influence and support students. So I thought I'd give you just a brief overview of what our program does, and then share a little bit about our results at Columbia Heights. So our program, College Possible, is a nationwide nonprofit. We were started in 2000 in St. Paul, and we have since expanded to six cities nationwide. We serve low-income, college-capable students who might not otherwise enroll in college or who have the potential to attend schools that they might not otherwise consider. So we use a near-peer mentoring model. We employ, or we use AmeriCorps service members to deliver our curriculum after school to cohorts of 40 students. So at Columbia Heights High School, we serve 40 juniors and 40 seniors, and those coaches, we call them the AmeriCorps members, are working with students after school in their junior year on primarily ACT preparation, learning about the different kinds of colleges, exposing them to various majors, and the process of applying and what that transition might feel like. And then in the senior year, they're focused on applying to college, applying for scholarships, financial aid, and preparing to make the transition to college to successfully enroll. Our program does follow students all the way until college completion, and so we're really proud to be one of the few college-access programs. It's also a college-success program, so really looking at making sure that your students are making it all the way to and through college. Let's see. Another piece of information I think it's important to share with school boards is that we are a completely free program. We're free to students and their families, and we're also free to the districts and high schools. So, we raise all of our own money and are proud to be able to deliver our services here. I do have with me some results from our Columbia Heights cohorts, and I will make sure that you get those. But the banner headline is that since we've started our programming at Columbia Heights High School in 2008, 100% of students that have gone through our program have been admitted to college. And in their junior year, our students have, on average, raised their ACT score 23%, which really can be the difference between not earning admittance to college or not earning the scholarships that students need to enroll, and having those funds and having that ability to attend and graduate. So since 2005, since 2008, we have served 255 students. So you'll see in your packet an overview, a story about our work, and as well as some highlights of what our program looks like and what the benefits to students and to the school include. Couple other things I wanted to share with you tonight are about our senior class, so we already know, it's actually an update from the printout you have, but 100% of the class of 2015 has been admitted to college, and we have three students who've won the Wallen Scholarship, one who's won a Coca-Cola Scholarship, two Polad Scholarship winners, and one Horatio Alger Scholarship winner. And Louis Karchi, who is just mentioned in the previous presentation, is one of our senior students, so we're really proud of him and his ambitions to go to Princeton. So I'm glad to take any questions that you have, but mostly just want to reiterate that we are so proud to be working in your district, so grateful for the support of staff, and incredibly proud of our students and all that they have accomplished. So thank you for letting us be part of your college-going culture at Columbia Heights, and we look forward to continuing to partner with you.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you. My, my daughter went through College Possible, and without that help, she wouldn't be where she is now, so, thank you for your partnership, it means the world.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thanks for sharing some of your time tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for all that you do.
Okay, next on the agenda is creating college and career-ready graduates. The Board will be presented with information on creating college and career-ready graduates. Presenters are Director Burkus and Casey.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board. There's a theme running through these three presentations of all the great things happening There's a theme running through these three presentations of all the great things happening in this district around college and career readiness. And, um, I, I just wanted to mention, I, I've done a lot of things over the course of my years here in Columbia Heights, uh, public schools, but I would rate right at the very top my experience with the, uh, college seminar in New York City. Uh, it was, uh, an opportunity, uh, along with, uh, a few other staff members, including Mr. Holmgren over there too and his wife, Sherry, uh, they were also on board the bus. Uh, and I think you saw who all the rest were, but just an incredible chance to see, um, what great kids we have, uh, what a big world there is out there for them to explore and to, uh, just see the, the sparkle in their eye. You can see futures, uh, ex- you know, expanding, uh, ideas about what they might be able to do. So, I, I, I don't know, it was a very, very motivating, uh, moving, I, I think is the word I would say, trip for me, to be with those kids. Uh, they were fabulous. They were so, uh, very proud of them. So, with our presentation today, uh, it feels a little bit mundane compared to, uh, what that trip was. But it is the hard work behind the scenes that really does take place. So, uh, Director Mann and I are really going to emphasize again what Principal Robleski said. How are we working to create worlds of opportunities for every learner in our district? And I think, uh, with that, we're going to, um, of course, talk about core values. But in order to do that, I think it does, and I think I'm going to put the, the one right at the top today on it. It takes a community of, uh, support. We saw that in the trip. And I do think, uh, that means outside of our school district. And it also means the community of, of staff within our district that are working with our kids, that community as well. And so, what you'll see today in our, um, presentation is really, uh, the joint effort, uh, between, uh, many different people, but really led by Director Mann. And so, I'm really want to thank him for our work in this area. So, if you want to, um, show, one of the first pieces that again, uh, Casey has really led us with is, um, being able to define our benchmarks. What are they? What does it take to be on a, a path to career and college readiness? And I think to bring that out, um, all that complexity into a, into one visual that spans from the early childhood, uh, pre-K, all the way to, you know, graduation, uh, is, takes a lot of work, actually. And so, this has really defined, um, what we mean, or at least in terms of those benchmarks for college career readiness. But we wanted to add more to that. Um, that's pretty, um, brief. There's again, lots that goes on behind that. So, what he and Beth Folly did from teaching and learning was first really work on, at a high school level, what does it take to be college and career readiness? And there's a lot that goes into it. So, I think Mr. Mann was gonna, Director Mann is gonna click inside and show us a little bit of what is inside, um, this particular booklet that we have for our high school. You will see that it is a, um, uh, booklet that's built really for an audience of both student and parent or, or family members, whoever that is, that is guiding the student from home. So, you'll see in it lots of checklists, lots of different things that are there that can be used as a ninth grader, for example. What are all the things that you need to do as a ninth grader in order to be ready for college? What are all the things that you need to do as a tenth grader, as an eleventh grader, and as a senior? And those lists are pretty comprehensive in terms of different actions that you need to take in order to be, um, on a pathway to being able to be accepted into college as a senior. So, there was a lot of work that went into that, uh, in terms of again, providing that very explicit, um, detailed list for students and parents. And I think this is an area where, um, again, that engagement really goes from, uh, sort of broad statements to very specific things that teachers, students, and parents can work on together. So, when, uh, this came out, I think, uh, the, it was after our benchmarks. And Superintendent Kelly really said, "Well, if you're going to do that for high school, we need that for middle school as well." Because we are talking about, uh, benchmarks that go all the way down into pre-K. So, that wasn't our original plan, but it was a great idea and we said, "Okay, we'll, we'll do that." And so, the same team, again, led by Director Mann, took that on. And so, in the middle school, uh, book, you can see the, the theme in terms of, it looks very similar. But the middle school book wa- came out, uh, a little bit differently. Uh, we realized that it's not the same list of actions, but still there are things that students and parents should be aware of that they can do to be on a pathway to college and career readiness. So, we came up with, uh, two kinds of lists. One was, um, things that you should be doing all the time, all year long, and then things that happen by semester. And then really checklists that, um, if you look at, and maybe Mr. Mann can pull to the colored, um, screens, um, where we have, um, as you can see on the screen, you can see where our, our sixth graders and then our seventh and eighth graders, all of them can really have an annual or a by semester, uh, tally of how they're doing to provide that opportunity for, "Am I, um, on track?" And if not, "What could I do differently?" But really trying to really hammer home that message that what you do in sixth grade is going to have an impact on what you will do later in life. And so, how can you make sure that if you're not on track, you get on track? If you're on track, you stay on track. And with that, we also wanted to be able to, um, at this level, really talk about possible careers, uh, to, uh, say that if you want to be a fireman, uh, there's ways to do that. Uh, if you want to be a teacher, there's ways to do that. And that, uh, this whole idea of preparing for your future is something very exciting. So, in both cases, our plan is that these booklets will stay with families for the duration of their, of the time they're with the academy and then the duration of time they're with the high school. So, that is a reference book. It's a, um, uh, basically the benchmarks defined in greater detail in terms of what you need to do to be on them. And hopefully, uh, something that we will be able to, uh, build more and more advisories, uh, more and more, uh, ways for teachers to be talking to students, for parents to be looking and asking questions if need be, to our principals or deans. Um, so, we're very excited about the, uh, the way these turned out and the opportunities that it provides us for, for communicating with our students and families. But we're not done and I've been talking the whole time. And I, and again, I want to, uh, give, uh, Director Mann, uh, the credit for really spearheading this effort and teaching and learning, providing, uh, lots of work with this, in particular Beth Folly. But, uh, really, he led the charge. And so, I think you were going to, uh, Director Mann, you're going to talk a little bit about next steps.
Yes, uh, this is our checklist in terms of what we've accomplished and what we are going to accomplish. You'll see that we did the high school guide in the spring. Uh, the middle school guide, uh, that was spring of two thousand fourteen. So, we started distributing that through the high school this last fall. Middle school guide, uh, we finished that up and that's going to be distributed in the fall. And we just started within the last week on the elementary school guide. We actually thought it was going to be something really succinct, one or two pages. But our, our meeting lasted about an hour and a half on Friday. It was four thirty and then it was, I think, four forty-five and we was, and the list just kept on getting bigger. So, uh, that's going to be, uh, that's going to be an interesting guide. It's, it's going to be fun. And then, once we're done with that, then we're going to start, uh, on the pre-K guide. So, the intent is from pre-K all the way through high school, there will be guides for students and for parents, practical guides to use. Any questions?
This is great. This is a great idea to be able to give all of those benchmarks because we talk about it, but to see it in black and white is going to be extraordinarily helpful. It's a wonderful tool. I, I didn't know this was the direction this was going. Um, I don't, is anybody else doing something like this that you've seen?
From our research, we haven't found, (laugh) part of our, our research is that we haven't found anything out there, uh, anything like this.
Innovation.
Don't tell anybody. We don't want to accomplish. Just kidding.
When I think it shows that college planning starts even in pre-K and that if we wait till high school before we plan for college, it's, it's almost too late. So, I'm glad that you're having these at every level.
Who gets to pick these goals for the kids on this chair?
Well, that gets to go around the kitchen table, I think, so (laugh). We're really hoping that, uh, kids will fill, that you'll see kids writing when you read those, that, uh, kids will be filling that in.
And hopefully, another piece of maybe getting some parent engagement, you know, with the kids and things. So, you know, sitting, like you said, whether it's kitchen table or wherever that they're talking together about, you know, what they're thinking is going to work for them.
Yeah, I think it's, it's one of those things where, um, at a middle school level, we, we really need to have... The rules changed a little bit and I think the urgency of being on a college and career readiness pathway really has to hit home in a middle school if they're going to have a chance to really drive that home at, at high school. So, it's, um, our hope that this will help with that, yeah.
These also tie into the website and we have a section, a whole section on college and career, careers. Uh, I think there's probably at least fifteen, if not twenty, different resources currently available, including the former presentation. And so, as we, as we continue to do this, we're going to continue to build the website. And that is also intended to be, um, a practical, hands-on resource as well. And then we're also building the pathway section.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, setting goals for kids, I mean, that's, that's how you can get to success, so. No, thank you, guys. It's awesome.
And if you break it up along the way, it's not as daunting, so that's another great thing.
Anybody else?
Thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
You know what? I'm going to corner you one time really quick. Who wants to talk about Naviance real quick? Dwayne or just briefly, or sort of briefly? I don't know if other parents maybe aren't aware of this program, the, the Naviance Student App?
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, I didn't mention that. But, uh, Naviance is a way to go online and it provide, uh, and get lots of direction in terms of what it takes to apply to a college, what it takes to apply for scholarships. So, it's, it's basically a, a much deeper version of what you see there in terms of the checklist. So, it's used by our college, but I'm sorry, by our high school as another form of, um, guidance to students, to parents, to families on what do you need to do at each step along the way of, of your high school career to, uh, be ready for college. So, it's, uh, part of our advisory system at the high school where teachers are able to, um, uh, introduce that to students. And, um, then hopefully, throughout the time that they're in the high school, they are, um, completing certain tasks within that. They're using it as a resource as they apply to colleges. Um, they use it as a, a resource to, um, locate, uh, scholarships, opportunities. So, it's a, a great, uh, resource and one that, um, hopefully, yes, parents can see how to get on it and, and use it. Highly recommend, uh, that parents check it out because it can be a, a source of, of really good information. Especially with that first child going through, when you're still trying to figure out how it all works, it, it provides basic information on that. Okay.
Can you just clarify how the parents would get the school username and password? Where they would get that information from?
All that information should be able to come home with the student. But if not, it should all be available through their advisor and if not, their advisor through the dean. But it should be coming home as part, and through their advisory system. All of that should be, um, commuted, communicated back to the parents that way. But there are ways to get it if, if that does not happen. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I mean, this can, and I know that this is to help keep them on the, uh, a solid path towards the, the college piece, but I also see here that, and I'm assuming that there's some input that probably takes place from the student itself, but managing your list of tasks, I mean, whether it's studying for a math test or turning in homework or things like that, it looks like it has the capability of that being in that app as well.
It's, it's, it's possible to use it as a way to organize yourself as well, yes, for studies and to see if you are, you know, even at a more minute level, staying on track or if you're, if not. So, uh, it can be a way for you to identify things that spark your interest and careers or colleges that might match that well. So, it has a broad scope of, uh, possibilities. And if, if the board was interested, I'm sure we could come back and do a deeper presentation on it and show what some of those pieces are. But it's, um, uh, one of the things that we probably rely on quite a bit as students are having those conversations about what does it take to get into college? What does it take for that next step? And this is a resource that really helps to open up some of those doors or those windows in terms of the information that you really need. So, FAFSA, for example, is the name of a, uh, process or a form that you have to fill out to, in order to qualify for financial aid for college. Uh, it provides information. It's quite, can be quite, quite daunting, a little complicated for, and... So, it can provide information for that as well. So, it's a well-rounded resource. Okay. Thank you.
Um, since you hear that, you send your dean a text message to say hello. Can parents, uh, text message like the dean if they had questions?
If they have questions, I, I believe that you can through, if you're in, even you're talking about Naviance, within Naviance, I believe that you have that capacity to communicate with the dean through that as well. So, it is a possibility within that system. So, it's not like it's working outside of that. It would be within Naviance, once you are in.
Okay. That's cool.
Yeah.
Thanks. Sorry to pull you back up. Sorry, Bill, you were halfway here. All right, next up will be a presentation on the Northeast Metro nine sixteen Capital View Project. Uh, will be provided information by Director Holmgren.
I just whispered to the chair because I thought it might be nice, since we've all talked about the trip since you were on there with your wife, um, and she was our nurse as, as, and, um, and took very good care of our kids. Did you have a takeaway, Bill, that, or something that you'd like to share about the?
Well, I, I don't think I have anything necessarily new, um, but just to reiterate, I mean, the students really were great. I mean, and for me, someone who doesn't, you know, I'm not in the school every day. I'm in my, I'm in my office or, you know, I'm in the schools once in a while. But I don't really have that personal connection with any of the students. I'm dealing with, uh, principals and teachers and, and, uh, other directors. Um, but actually, to get to know some of the students was really a neat thing for me. Even, even my wife, working in activities, she, she knows the students. I do not. So, my little crew that I was responsible for, you know, I, I got to know them pretty well. And now, even today, I ran into three of them today. And it was, it was really neat to go back and we can, and we can have something in common now and we can talk about some things that we, I never had before. So, the trip was great, though. And from someone who's been involved in, um, music my whole life, and I still am, um, to see the kind of, um, instruction that they receive from those conductors was really nice. I mean, they got some really nice, nice activities and really nice instruction that they wouldn't have got here back at home. So, yeah, it was a great trip. I recommend it highly.
Thank you, Bill.
Now, we're going to, I'm going to try to give you kind of a, I, I mean, my, my look at this project for, for District nineteen, nine sixteen is a little different than, um, you know, the, the rest of the crew. When we look at programming, you know, I always geared towards, well, you know, that's nice, we can do all these things, but, you know, what's it going to cost? You know, that's always a thing in the back of my mind. So, I'll, um, my, my look at this comes more from that angle. But I want to, I'm trying to give you just a kind of a quick, roundabout view of, of what's going to go on with that project. And of course, Laura's got a lot more detail than I do. So, if I say anything wrong, you know, speak up. Again, um, we really are here to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And I think, um, District nine sixteen is really a piece of that where we have special ed students that we really can't... where we have special ed students that we really can service here, or we don't have, really we don't have enough funds to service here is really the bottom line. But to be able to share with other districts, to put programs together for some of these students is really, really a good thing. So when we look at, uh, our core values, I mean, when we talk about collaboration, this is really a big, big piece of collaboration, um, with other districts, um, in, in our metro area, or our area of the metro. Again, I'm sure, uh, when we talk about core values, we talk collaboration, it really is community and it really is innovation. There's a lot of really good things going on at District nine sixteen and a lot of new innovative things going on at District nine sixteen. Now, when I, when I, when I talked to District nine sixteen, when they first started looking at what needs to be done, they had a long laundry list, oh, excuse me, of different options that they could do, um, that would try to take care of the programming needs that they had. Now, my understanding is they've come, you know, kept, kind of checking them off, well, this one really isn't going to be the holistic approach that we need. So they're actually down to two, two major options left, okay? And option two B is, uh, one of the options that they're still looking at. This meets some of our educational operational recommendations and this is a construction over five different phases. It will create significant student displacement during the time because it's a, it's a remodeling project where they have to keep moving the students as they're working on a piece of the building. It will include a new space, uh, for Wells South, um, the deferred maintenance will be addressed and it resets the life expectancy of the, of the building to really almost down to nothing, up to, back to thirty years, that it should last. And they're going to twenty-one million dollars at Lake Elmo and twenty-six million dollars at Capital View. And these are mainly remodeling, so some of the, at Lake Elmo is a new piece, but at Capital View is a remodeling piece. We click over to option three, this is where, um, we're looking at really a new building for Capital View. And this really meets all the educational operational recommendations, there'd be no student displacement. Of course, the new space for Wells is the same as it would be in the other option. Uh, deferred maintenance actually isn't necessary because it'll be a new building, uh, push that life expectancy down, instead of thirty years to sixty years. Um, again, the, the dollars, total dollars will be twenty-one million at Lake Elmo and thirty-five at, uh, Capital View. We're talking about the tax impact, um, when we look at how they spread the dollars or what their responsibility is for each of the school districts, seventy-five percent of it is based on usage of the programs. So when, when we get a little farther down here, you see that some of the dollars that, uh, levying towards us is a little higher than some of the other districts. That's mainly because we use, we use the programs at a higher percentage than other districts do. And then twenty-five percent of it is equalized. So that's like if they took every district and treated everybody the same, it would be equalized, everybody would get exactly the same amount of tax, uh, change. Twenty-five percent of it's done that way. So on a two-hundred thousand dollar home, now this is, I, I put the two-hundred thousand dollar, and this is the way it was presented to me, and you're going to see, um, in the handouts that I put in your packet, um, there's a big section on two-hundred thousand. But we'll, I asked her, I called, I said, we need to break this down to really match our district better, and I have those numbers for you tonight, okay? Um, and those aren't in your packet, because I just received them yesterday. So option two B, though, which is most of the remodeling, um, total, when we, they get full into the, into the process of putting this together and we need to pay back the construction piece, um, the levy would be twenty, twenty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents on a two-hundred thousand dollar home on a yearly basis.
That's per year?
Say what?
That's for a year?
That's for one year, okay. And for option three, you know, I put the number in there backwards and I, I apologize. Option three is the higher amount of twenty-one sixty-seven and nineteen fifty-nine is what goes to the option two B. The difference being two dollars and eight cents a year between a remodeled building and a brand-new building, okay? And I tried to break this down some more so you can kind of see what's happening. Now I have a hundred thousand dollar home, a hundred fifty thousand dollar home and a two-hundred thousand dollar home. Right now, pay two thousand, uh, fifteen, a hundred thousand dollar home is paying three dollars and eighty-four cents, is going to directly over to District nine sixteen from the tax levy here in Columbia Heights. Okay, as you go forward with the remodel, it'll jump to seven thirty-four and then up to seven seventy-five. And there's a rounding that happens, it's about seven seventy-five, seven seventy-six on a yearly basis until it's paid off. We look at the new side on a hundred thousand dollar home, um, right now it's three dollars and eighty-four cents, it would, it would jump up then to eight dollars and sixty cents. So that difference isn't big, but we'll, we'll talk about exactly what the differences are. But you get a better idea of, I think, what, how it would affect our homeowners here in Columbia Heights. If you remember, all the work we did last fall to get our levy passed, um, our average home is a hundred and five thousand dollars here in Columbia Heights. So a hundred thousand is closer to what the average person's going to pay here than a two-hundred thousand dollar home, even though we just, we definitely have two-hundred thousand dollar homes in our district. So we look at total tax impact on a hundred thousand dollar home, um, the, the increase from what they're paying now to what the higher amount would be is three dollars and ninety-two cents. And then the option three, the higher amount is four seventy-six, you see an increase there of eighty-four cents. So that's the difference between a remodeled building and a new building. Any questions or anything I can explain better or? I think the, the actual, I don't have a lot of information on the actual project, exactly what, you know, rooms are putting in each building, that, that I don't have. And we might have to have another, or at least have something to give you, and Laura definitely knows better.
Yeah, I can, I can answer some of, some of those questions. Uh, with the, uh, with the new project design, um, it's basically going to be multiple levels. So they'll be able to separate the student populations with, um, you know, because, uh, there are certainly, you know, um, like the Wells students, you know, shouldn't be with the, you know, the ALP, the CAP students and, you know, it's, it's just segregating out the student populations makes it a little bit easier. There's, um, uh, there's a lot of, uh, space that's in the original building as well, um, that is not usable at this time. Uh, the remodel project would actually put students into what is not considered, um, instructional space. So the plan, um, would be five phases, um, over the course of two years, uh, with the students moving from location to location to location. Um, and one of which will be, um, the gymnasium, they believe that will have to use for instructional space, which may be very disruptive for these particular student populations. Um, it, it, all of the, um, all of the, um, programs would actually have their own space with the administration being the, the administrat, the administrative offices and the, um, and, uh, like the technical people, the, um, like, uh, uh, the deaf heart of hearing, visually impaired, um, they would have their offices in the locations that actually didn't have any, um, uh, didn't have, uh, natural light. So all the, all the, um, rooms would have natural light and there would be proper facilities in there as well. So, um, it's, it's, um, and, um, energy efficient, too, because, um, Capital View is now to the point where there's, um, there's, there's no way to, it, it really increase the R-value of the, the, the building itself, it needs a new envelope. And, um, being able to, the, the ceilings even moving, um, uh, moving the air around on the inside of the building is actually a great difficulty, too, because they actually have to reduce the space to do it properly. So there's, I, there, there, there is numerous issues. I'm, I, I'm very concerned that something will actually happen to the building and there will be no place for the program, the programs that are there. So I don't know what, if we'll be looking at any other type of, um, plan in place if, um, if one or these others weren't going to be done. But we are going to be getting the final, final, uh, report, they were going to make some changes in that and, um, when I do get the final report, I will make copies and make sure everybody has it, so.
Yeah, they're, that building is really similar to some of our older buildings. We are looking, again, even at ours and trying to figure out the best way to heat as we go forward. Lots of newer buildings have a lot higher ceilings and we can move air and ductwork above the ceilings where here, we cannot. There's no place to put the ductwork, so that's what makes it difficult to, otherwise, then you're stuck with those little ventilators in the, in the wall, it really doesn't do the job, so. A lot of the same issues that we are having here.
Can you explain to me how the financing piece would work? We're talking about tax implications, I mean, it's, where's that money come from? I mean, of course, our, we're a higher dollar amounts because of, you know, we have a higher usage, but how does that work? The, of the fifty-six million or whatever it is?
What happens is they would sell bonds to do the program, just, just like we would. But, but District nine sixteen, of course, doesn't have any type of levy authority, they don't have any way to, you know, tax, to receive any dollars to pay that off. So that's why it gets shared among the districts who are members. Um, even we have right now, like I say, the, if we look at what we're paying right now, if you look back, if you, here, I can look, here, let's go back here. What, if you look under here, a hundred thousand dollar home, just the first, the first column, the three dollars and eighty-four cents, that's what everybody right now is paying for District nine sixteen. So we do have a levy that we do on a yearly basis that goes to District nine sixteen as part of our levy process, um, that we do in December.
But I guess that's my question, is, is where does the judicial money come from then? I mean, we have to levy that?
Yeah, we would have to levy that and when we talk about the end here, we're going our way. It'd be an increase for the, on a hundred thousand dollar home, there'd be an increase of three dollars and ninety-two cents, um, for the remodeling project or for the new building, it'd be four dollars and seventy-six cents on a yearly basis, um, from what we're paying right now.
Do you know the to, total dollar amount on that at the fore, say the, the, either, either one of the options? What's the amount of money that we'd be going out and levying?
It should be in your hand, in that handout.
Is that?
Give me one second here. I guess I don't have the, maybe I do, no, I don't. We don't have a breakdown, the exact doll, total dollars per school district, but we can certainly figure it out pretty easily, just by what the tax and, what the net tax capacity is times the rate. So we can get, we can certainly get those numbers, uh, to you.
Okay, and, and that's, I know it's, it's a phenomenal program, I just think if we're going to, you know, we need to at least have some serious conversations about, you know, if we're going to go back to our taxpayers and, you know, ask for more money, you know?
Oh, that's fine, I will get those exact dollars.
Uh, Director Holmgren, is it on page sixteen in the board packet where we're talking about the different school districts and, um, the proportionality of the amounts?
I think that's the taxing, uh, the net, net tax capacity, that's on.
Yeah, that's just the tax capacity, that, those aren't the dollars that we would be levying by any means, no.
Okay. One thing that you'll see, Bill, and on that particular chart, Director Holmgren, on page sixteen, um, some of the superintendents that have high hu, usage but are small districts, um, I look at it and they're saying, this is larger than we would probably raise on our own properties and that it's, um, bigger districts have more economies of scale so they can have some programs within their own districts, too. So that is something that the superintendents are discussing, um, because we all want to support each other. But, um, there may be a district and there are a few of them that can hold some of these programs within the confines of the buildings that they have, whereas we don't have that. So, um, that is why perhaps the larger districts would not be paying as much for this, based on that usage, because we're small and we have to outsource, so.
When are decisions being made as far as what they're going to be doing?
Oh, it's going to be at least two years.
Okay, so we got some.
At least, at least two years.
Before they would even consider going out for the bonds and stuff?
Yeah, at, at this point right now, um, uh, there's, um, there's the Lake Elmo project that is currently going on, um, that will not, um, that will break ground, I believe, this, uh, this summer. And we'd be looking at opening in, uh, twenty, twenty-si, is it twenty, twenty-seventeen or, oh, oh my gosh, yeah. So, yeah, after Lake Elmo is established for a while, so it, it, this is not, um, the results of the study was, was basically to show if it was even feasible, um, to do a remodel. But the major, the major hurdle for doing a remodel is that it actually exceeds the Minnesota Department of Education guidelines for remodel. Because it's well over, well over sixty percent, as you can see, twenty-six million dollars for remodel, thirty-five million for a brand-new building, it's over their guidelines, they said we need to have a, um, we need to have an option that includes a, uh, a new building as well. Um, the other issue is that, that nine sixteen is running, um, running across as well is that, um, there is no way to fund a, um, a remodel. That, that's, the sad truth is, is that they literally just don't have any way to fund that without some sort of legislative intervention. Because they're not, they're not, um, we would actually have to pass basically referendums in all of these districts at the same time to be able to do that. So it's.
When, when we look at the, the new building, it's just like we have done here, the small remodeling projects we've done on our elementarys, where we do that with lease levy, we can do the lease levy with new building space, but we cannot use any of that money, any type of lease money for any type of remodeling work. So in order to do the remodeling project at nine sixteen, they would have to have legislative approval to do that, which they don't have at this time, point in time.
Okay, and I guess the reason I ask timeframes is, is, and I hate to put this on you, but I think as a board, it would be good for us to have, you know, what the tax implication is going to be, what the dollar amounts are, you know, even to what, you know, we're using the building, you know, what our usage is somewhere there, not like next week, you can.
No, well, I actually want to take where long you put it together. I was, I guess I was really focused on letting you know what would happen to our taxpayers, how many dollars comes out of their pocket for these projects, and that's what I was focused on. So I, I apologize for not having the total.
No, 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 this is, it just, this got me thinking that this would be stuff that would be good conversations for us moving forward. So as a board, you know, Laura can take back what is in the, the board feels is in the best interest and, and be able to, to move that way. That's, it's not a, not enough information tonight, this, it's just moving forward, there's probably some other things that we should probably look at and talk about before it gets to a point where they have to actually do the funding.
Uh, there's one other thing, too. Um, at the last, um, nine sixteen meeting that, um, that I attended, there was also quite a bit of discussion on, um, it, because this is definitely a, this is not a project that is going to be started this year or next year or probably the year after that, maybe even the year after that, okay? Um, but because of, um, uh, building costs, we're going to be getting yearly updates on projections, so it doesn't, you know, we're not looking at, you know, we're thinking it's going to be this much and if, uh, building costs escalate, we want to be able to know that along the way and report that back, so we, we kind of have an idea of what we're looking at, so.
Absolutely, okay, all right, cool. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Bill or Laura?
I guess I'm just a little confused. What is the process or our next steps, I guess, at this point? What are we looking at? Just gathering this information or do we have a decision coming up here in the near future or we're just kind of given heads up?
That was just my kind of question, was the timeframe is, because I see numbers and I see increases and I'm going, okay, is this something that's taking place next week? And my understanding is it's a couple of years away at least, so we have an opportunity to have those conversations. That's why I said down the road, maybe once we get through the busy part of the school year here as we move into, if it ever gets quiet or when it gets quiet, to be able to have some conversations, it's not something that, and I don't mean to answer your question, but my understanding is I don't think we have to decide something right away, there's an opportunity to get some more information and talk, I think.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and the, the information to make those decisions definitely are coming through, you know, the board over at nine sixteen. So they're the first ones presented with the information. We usually get the information after they have their, their meeting, okay? Like I said, this presentation was mainly focused on the financial side and what the impact will be for our, our taxpayers. Like I said, I really didn't, wasn't planning on presenting exactly what the project was.
One of the, the governance questions ultimately that we'll have to advise, much like we did with WEMAP, meaning we, the collective board, is if, um, if this is a project that we can afford to do or not do. And that's, um, that is where the struggle, just like we had to make some decisions, it's very, it's like WEMAP but a little different. This was a financial decision, the other one was academic. What are we, what are we doing in the long run? So that's where the governance comes in.
Okay.
Because when, um, uh, Laura goes, uh, to that board, she will represent us there in the next couple of years and when I go to superintendent's advisory, um, we are asked what are our boards thinking about and what are our superintendent, what's the superintendent's perspective as well? So that the board and that superintendent can have some feedback from all of the people in the joint powers, all of the school districts in the joint powers agreement, um, somewhat like taking a temperature out there. But as member Palmer has said, um, those programs can probably not exist much longer in Capital View the way they are. So something has to be done, it's a question of what and how much. Don't you think that's fair?
I, I think that's, that's fair and, um, and, uh, I, I, everybody needs to be really informed about kind of the situation that, that's going on over there. Um, this, um, these particular numbers and part of this report was we accepted the report that was presented to us. We didn't vote on yes or no or the. We didn't vote on yes or no or this or that, so, um, but I, I do want you to stay informed about this because this is, um, uh, if you, if you haven't had a chance to go visit Capital View, I definitely suggest it. Um, just because there's, there's a lot of, um, really, um, they've done a great job on fitting a round peg into a square hole. Um, they really have, they, they do some wonderful things over there, you know, but, um, uh, yeah, so take a look at it and see if it, if it is, uh, if it's appropriate and, uh, suitable and dignified for these rather unique populations. So we, because we're, we're gonna have to figure, we're gonna have to figure something else out. I'm, I'm very, very concerned about the condition of the building and whether or not it's gonna be usable.
Right, and I think you've done an excellent job of keeping us informed. We've known there's stuff then that's been coming for quite a while now, we're getting, you know, a couple of numbers are being tossed out there, so we're going that direction. But, um, you know, as Lori said, more information so that you're able to go back and when there comes time for that vote, you know, whether it's a yay or nay or whatever it is, you know, you're able to take back what the group has. So this is a good start for us, I think, as far as moving forward, and it doesn't sound like there's a huge, it doesn't have to be next week or anything, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get you the full report, it's about this, that, complete with pictures of every little thing in there that they wanna do differently, like, I don't know.
Yeah, and I, I don't, and just based on what I've learned from, from you over the last couple of years, I don't doubt that there's a need, there, you know, for those, something to happen with those buildings. I guess the question I'm asking is, is what part of that are we gonna be able to be financially? So I mean, I don't question that the, the buildings are, I mean, if I was gonna pick, I'd say, based on what you're telling me, the new is definitely the option to go, would make sense. But again, what's the ramification for, for us, for our kids and for our districts? So that's more along the lines that I'm asking about, it's not the, whether or not it's, there's a need there.
Uh, would it be helpful if I got some information about, um, our particular, our students that are, that are attending programs, not, nothing, um, nothing data private?
I think those are all things we're gonna have to look at eventually, is how many kids are, are, are accessing the programs, what that's costing us and not to put a dollar amount on kids. But I mean, again, sometimes the, you know, tough questions at least have to be asked to see what, you know, how does this work for us moving forward, so. Um, and I don't know if it would be, and I, I, again, certainly not immediately, but it's just, these are just trying to get some questions going for, in preparation of, you know, making those decisions, so.
Uh, and Member Palmer, um, we could certainly have Director Hollaby, um, do some of our usage at Capital View. And as Bill prepares the next report as well to talk about how many students we have over there and what kind of programs without, um, uh, and, and estimated cost without, um, divulging, uh, data private, if you would like that.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a good idea.
So let's do that as well then.
Yeah, and, and not, I, I don't mean to add things to anybody's plate right now, I just think these are things sometime in the near future would be worthy of conversation. I think that there's, there's plenty to do, especially even just to get through the rest of the school year. So I'm not asking for any, I'm personally not asking for anything immediately on that.
We have, we have a couple of years, so just to make sure that everybody's aware.
I think that's great that we're knowing this far in advance.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
And you're gonna stay there. Um, external user access recertification.
This is just a small piece of information I need to bring to you, because I, I need you to take some action on this at, at our next meeting. Um, but right now, we interact with MDE in very many different ways, from, um, giving them information about our student counts, giving them information about our finances. We have different employees with different accesses, a different, uh, different systems at MDE, like our health and safety, um, program, for an, for an example. Right now, um, all these people have to have permission in order to access those programs at MDE. And as things have come, be, come along, been a lot more electronic, before we'd fill out a piece of paper and we would just mail it in. Where now, we're actually sending information into their data systems. And so right now, under every single different system, which there's a laundry list of systems, um, there has to be a piece of paper filled out and then Superintendent Kathy Kelly, um, gives them permission to be there or not, okay? And we have to watch that, and if someone leaves a district, we gotta make sure we take him off and so forth. Anyway, um, so what this is about is MDE is putting a new system in place, a total electronic system where all the, all the, all these different systems would have authority from different people, um, by the superintendent looking at that online, giving them access or giving them, or not giving them access, and that will be viewed on a yearly basis for each of those programs. Um, but we have to have the board give Superintendent Kelly, you know, authority to do that, and that's what we'll be asking you to do at the next meeting, that simple. Question?
Yep, thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Next up is board policies, the first reading. Uh, it's the first reading for policy number four zero six, which is public and private personnel data. Four ten, which is family and medical leave policy, four thirteen harassment and violence, four nineteen tobacco-free environment, four twenty-one gifts to employees, four fifteen staff development. These policies will appear on a future agenda for approval. Questions on any of those?
It looks like most of the changes are, if not all the changes are federal and state law changes, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any males? Okay, moving along, we have the National School Board Association Conference Information. Um, board members Landwehr and Ma Louis attended the, um, National School Board Association Conference, and they are going to do a presentation on what they learned. You wanna go?
I'm going.
Okay.
I have some slides, so I'm gonna present over here. Well, the goal of tonight is to just give you an overview, um, there, as you know, there are many, many sessions available and, um, I attended fourteen sessions in total, when you add up all the general, general sessions, then they had study halls, uh, so even when you're in the exhibit hall looking at exhibits, you can, can learn. So, um, took, took part in that and, as well as, um, individual sessions. My focus this year was on technology, um, is, um, that seemed to be a, a pressing need and a pressing interest of the district. So, um, I just wanted to focus on a few of this, of, of the sessions, uh, because like, it's hard to condense fourteen sessions into fifteen minutes. So hopefully, uh, it won't, uh, it'll go quickly. The, uh, first session that I attended was on, uh, was by Dr. Bill Daggett, who is, um, nationally renowned consultant in education. He is the chairman and founder of the Inter- International Center for Leadership and Education, and his session was on trends, um, national trends and how, and what their impact is on preparing students for college and career, and career readiness. And, um, Dr. Daggett, first of all, is, um, right out of the box, said he's not politically correct, so I want, and he, he isn't, but he's very, um, forthright and, um, honest with his assessment. And he's been an advisor to governments, uh, governors' associations, uh, the Melinda Gates Foundation, and many other global organizations. So he is in a good position to see what's happening internationally with education. The, the, I wanna just go over some of the highlights of that, that, um, I think will be important for us to look at. This is a very big picture, there is a growing gap between, uh, school improvements and the world. The, the world is changing much fir- faster than schools are improving. And so the goal is to hopefully cha- improve faster than the changing world, but at least to get closer to the, the line of the way the world is changing. And what he has done is he's studied, um, twenty of the best schools that are, that are taking control of the situation and making the necessary changes to improve, um, improve their, uh, educate, their education with regard to the world's, um, trends. And this is important to us because if we're gonna be excellent in our education, do school well here and also be innovative, we need to be aware of these trends and, um, and plan as well. So the, the idea is to take control, but take control of what? He thinks that it's the culture that we need to take control of. The culture in each district is the main driver of how well that district, uh, performs. And instead of letting the trends control us, um, we, the district should take control of the culture. And it's dealing with what's urgent versus what's really important. Culture ultimately will trump the stra- strategy of, in, in the district. And here are some of the emerging trends. First of all, the digital technology impact. If you look at this picture, this was a, um, a reception for Pope Benedict back in, uh, two thousand and five, Pope Benedict the Sixteenth. And then this is in two thousand and fourteen, if you look on the right side, you'll notice there are a lot of tablets, there are a lot of, um, cell phones taking pictures. So the difference is, is that we've become much, much more digital, um, society. We've gone from the yellow sheet, uh, yellow notepad to the web, which has been just informational, one point O relational, and now it's anticipatory. Um, we're dealing with artificial intelligence even now, deep data mining, um, Google Ads, how many of you have already experienced, uh, Google Ads mysteriously popping up that are just, uh, tailored to your, your, um, needs? And then there's a program called Wolfram Alpha, which, uh, hopefully there's no students paying attention, that's a, a program that will actually write your paper for you, um, if you plug into that, so highly anticipatory.
And easily identified by technology in our district.
Exactly. Not only can, will you, there are programs to write prog- uh, write papers, there's also a program to do your math for you called Photomath. Uh, you take a picture of the math problem with your cellphone and it will solve the problem for you and also show you how it's solved. So that's where technology is going and we're just getting started. Digital impact, um, then we, how do we respond to that with education? First of all, digital literacy is really important, what's out there? What, uh, digital, digital literacy includes what tools, application and systems are available? Digital footprint, being aware of what you put on the web, will stay on the web and will, will follow, um, students, um, the rest of their lives. And then vetting of, re- vetting of, uh, sources, so, uh, using computers in a responsible way. Not only do we have to, uh, do digital li- uh, literacy, but we have to transform the way we teach to match the technology that is out there. It has already transformed the workplace, um, but has it transformed the education system? Gaming, if you don't know what your kids are, uh, games your kids are playing, uh, Dr. Daggett says, find out, play them. Because gaming is being increasingly built on brain research. Um, gaming is becoming more and more personalized to the, the gamer and it's built on the growth, um, as the gamer gets better, so does the game. And so the military and corporate world are increasingly moving to game technology, uh, for training, school districts should be as well. So districts need a gamification, online and digital literacy policy and plan, because that's the way the world is going. How can we use technology to be career-ready? Uh, this is a, a slide that, uh, high school teachers thought eighty-nine percent, when they were asked, are, are their students well or very well-prepared? College instructors say only twenty-six percent were very well-prepared, so there's a disconnect. The number of, of freshmen needing remediation, fifty-one point seven percent for a two-year college, nineteen point nine percent for a four-year college. And so, uh, this is the, um, the dropout rate, two-year colleges, forty-four point five percent between the first and second year and thirty-four point eight percent for four-year colleges. So the, the, the message is, is that students need to be better prepared for college so that not only do they not need remediation, but they also stay in college. And that's a big part of college and career readiness. So the success of graduates is the, is a key, um, driver of college success and also cost, dealing with the cost. As we just saw, uh, with our scholarships and with, uh, the college readiness programs, uh, college tuition rates have increased an average of twice the rate of inflation in the past seventeen years. The average loan for college average, uh, college grad in twenty fourteen was thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars, that's the debt they graduated with. There's a, a graph of, the green line is college cost versus, uh, inflation. So getting, uh, students prepared for college and then also finding the right major. One, thirteen million Americans are, are currently unemployed, but three point eight million jobs in the U.S. remain unfilled. And that's because your major matters a lot. This is a list of the degrees that, um, that students typically choose, um, number two being, being the highlight, general studies. But this is a list of actually what is, um, competitive as far as degrees and, and, and jobs that are out there, general studies is number ten. So picking the right major is, is, is critical to becoming college and career-ready. Dr. Daggett thinks that because of this anticipatory technology, what we're seeing is, the top blue is the highest level, um, skilled jobs. The bottom, uh, the black is the lowest level skilled jobs. What's gonna be happening is, um, the middle is gonna be shrinking, there's gonna be technology that's going to, uh, shrink the, the middle skilled workforce and what we'll see is more high-skilled and more low-skill. So these jobs are gonna be lost, telemarketing. Secretarial administration, administrative assistant, accountant, auditors, technical writers, machinists. All middle school jobs that are currently, um, uh, can be replaced with technology or will be replaced. Economist is another one, health technologist. So what's the way to address this, um, is by using an application model, becoming more real-world in the way we educate students. Uh, allowing them to, the goal is to apply to real-world unpredictable situations and going beyond knowledge and, um, going across disciplines. This is the knowledge tack, and this is another app, um, goal is to go up higher on the knowledge taxonomy, going from awareness up to evaluation. That's the highest level of knowledge, being able to evaluate, um, situations. If you put those two on a, a graph, what we're looking for really is to go from, uh, low-level, low, uh, application, which would be A, up to D, which is the high-level, high-application. And this is too small, I, I'll, I'll skip that, but I'm gonna share these slides with, uh, the administration and, and hopefully, um, any other board member who wants to look at them more in detail. As you can see, um, the different quadrants, it becomes more and more, uh, application-based and more and more, um, higher up on the knowledge scale. If you move from A to C, which is low knowledge, low application, to high knowledge, low application, that's basically what the ACT and SAT measures in the current college-ready courses. To be job-ready, you move from, uh, uh, low knowledge to, uh, low application to, uh, higher application, but still low knowledge. But to be career-ready, you've gotta move from the, the low knowledge and low application up to high application and high, um, knowledge. And that should be the goal. That's what international, uh, benchmark performance competence, competencies are measuring, there's a test called the PISA test, which Dr. Daggett thinks is gonna be the new ACT SAT measurement, it's gonna be the standardized test. Right now, America is in those, uh, rankings, and it's not that America has moved, it's the rest of the world has, has passed. Uh, we used to be higher, but now we've dropped. Because other countries are becoming more homogeneous, more equity, more tutoring sessions, have a culture of high expectations, and there's a culture of knowledge versus application, more applic- application than knowledge. have a culture of high expectations and there's a culture of knowledge versus application, more applic- application than knowledge. For example, these, this is a question about, um, a math question. You know, using, applying knowledge to, uh, solve a problem using, uh, how you would increase a recipe if you have, um, um, for example, making sauce. Another example is, uh, a nurse having to change an IV, um, and, and, uh, multiplying and doing the, the math necessary to adjust for the IV. Versus this kind of question, how many irrational numbers are there between one and six? Which is at the low level, um, quadrants, low, low level knowledge and low level of application. And these are the kind of questions you find on the standardized tests mostly. So, um, now, along with digital awareness, career-ready, application, more application, rigor, also financial. He brought up that the national debt is that number right now and that was a month ago and it is increasing. That's definitely going to affect every program, uh, including education. Right now, the United States is borrowing forty-one percent of every dollar it's spending. This is a graph of the, the national debt over year, the years, just spiraling. And then demographic, demographic changes. Um, the United States is changing in all these areas. Mostly he pointed out that, um, they're changing in, um, the birth rate is declining and, um, the average age is increasing. So there's going to be less, um, young people and more older people in, in the demographic and that's going to have an impact on education as well. So the guiding principles, um, this is, these are the principles that are to be built into the culture. These are ones that they have found have really caused, uh, helped students become more and more college and career-ready. He's having a model schools conference in, in June, um, uh, that he, um, of course promoted there for, um, administrators and principals and board members. And then he brought up the fact that not only do you want to have effectiveness in your, um, your strategies, but also be efficiency, efficient. And you want the strategies that have the highest, um, effectiveness, but are, uh, and also the highest efficiency measured by cost. This is what they found. The efficient strategy, or the effective strategies is a great student-teacher relationship. Uh, much like what we saw with the New York trip, uh, that really stuck, uh, stuck out. Building those relationships, building those, uh, ties with students. Applying knowledge is, it crease, creates, um, growth. One point three years of growth per year when you don't apply knowledge and teach that way. Literacy strategies, he said the most, um, most, uh, hardest, highest, um, uh, reading material now is going to be technical, um, materials, technical manuals. Um, there's a measurement of readings of, um, ability, which is called the Lexile score. And currently literacy, um, sophomores have Lexile score of average of eleven hundred and twenty. Technical manu- manuals require, uh, literacy score of two thousand. So he asked, why are we stopping reading and, uh, teaching reading in high school? We should continue to continue, uh, continue to teach reading, uh, throughout the entire high school years. Uh, socioeconomic status is, is, is effective, but it's not anything that, uh, school districts can control. But they can control where the students are going, not where they came from. Um, and then based on, um, effectiveness and efficiency, application of knowledge is, um, effective and efficient. Having clear teacher expectations and clarity with students is also effective and efficient and student teacher, teacher relationships and literacy strategies. Professional development is also effective and efficient. The greatest impact is a culture of high expectations, relevance of instruction and strong relationships. Which boils down to teachers are our greatest hope. Teachers have to, um, if teachers, um, are able to accomplish those things, then there will be great learning. What's le- least effective? Class size, surprisingly. He said that you can increase class size by an average of nine percent and still have the same, uh, effectiveness and it's more efficient. Summer school is not as effective and as efficient as, uh, a, a way to, to, um, create improvement. He brought up seventy percent. This is, this is stunning. Seventy percent is an important number because seventy percent of today's students would not be eligible for the military. Either they lack high school diplomas, cannot pass basic literary task, literacy tests, they're too obese, drugs or incarceration. So what's going to happen to those? And that's increasing one percent per year. Are they going to be employable? Are they headed to public assistance? Um, there's some of the life expectancy graphs. And then the system, how do we create student achievement? Student achievement is created by great teaching, by orgi- uh, instructional leadership and ultimately by organizational leadership, all working together. And there are different, uh, branch, or different segments to that. Culture being the one, uh, main one in organizational leadership. Move in the school board role and that is the why. Why do we do the things we do? The administration and, um, the staff figures out the what and the how. He said another trend is moving from intervention to prevention, rewarding, um, when there isn't a failure. But because of that, um, failure is being redefined and the standards are being lowered. We need to move back to intervention and stopping, instead of using assessments that just are measured at the end, being ha- using formative assessments that will, um, catch problems right, uh, as they occur. So start with the board, move down, uh, to the administrative staff, faculty staff, parents, community and students. These are the criteria then to measure, um, he says you get more of what you measure and you, you can determine what's the values that you have based on what you measure. And he thinks you should measure foundational learning, uh, stretch learning, student engagement and personal skill development. Because these are all the factors that lead to strong college and career readiness. One way that you can use that, um, measure the effectiveness of, uh, of, uh, those items is using a tool called, um, WeSurveys. I'll see if. And this is a constant, it's a, a way to constantly measure the effectiveness of, um, instruction and how well students are engaged. And it measures both staff, um, um, perspectives as well as student, um, perspectives so that you can see if there's a mismatch or if they're on the, if they're on the same page. For example, uh, ninety-two perc- two percent of students, um, said, um, or teachers thought that students could apply what they're learning or teaching in everyday lives. Only fifty-eight percent of the students said that they could apply what they've learned. This is on average and there's more like that. So, um, I won't go through the rest of these, but I think you've got a flavor of, of, oh, and, and this is one strategy that systematically that he said really works well is called looping, where you have a, uh, a, a class that, where the teacher stays with the class, especially in elementary. Um, they might be, uh, with the same teacher in second grade and third grade. Because those relationships are so important, why would you not, um, benefit or use the relationships that were built in second grade between student and, and teacher? Uh, and then, um, not move them up together in third grade, continue on. He's, another politically incorrect, uh, statement is that interdisciplinary chairs, um, should be used instead of department heads. He says department heads mainly just, uh, are gatekeepers. And they don't, um, they're not innovative, like the system is not innovative. He would much prefer a high school student or high school teacher and a middle school teacher getting together, spending time together, um, and building a curriculum that way or be, uh, teachers within, uh, different disciplines. And then he said, uh, electives should be in ninth grade, not twelfth grade because, um, it'd be, it, the students are more engaged, um, at that earlier level than when they're older. And that creates the, um, the relevance for them. I will just skip over these. Um, another seminar I went to was, um, on, um, this faster.
Member Lan, we're in the interest of time. We're at about twenty minutes and we, if you have others that you want to add.
A minute's already, okay, I'm sorry.
Um, no, I've been, uh, to the information is, is something we'd like to hear, but maybe can we move that to down the road a little bit further?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll just wrap up real quick. Um, this is an innovative school which, uh, uses various methods to teach. Um, there are no, um, the students get to choose which of these methods they would like to use and they can go back and forth. They, um, have had phenomenal results. And then I had a work, um, a, a session on work, um, to stu- class to work, where the students attend and provide and, and, uh, actually go and internships, um, during the, the school day as part of their high school curriculum. So just lots of great ideas and I'm happy to share them with, with any of you. So, thank you.
I also attended the National School Bar Conference in Tennessee in Nashville, um, in March. That was the first time I attended the national conference, um, and I do not have a slideshow and I will probably keep it a little bit shorter. Um, I do see the time and there's still more, uh, more things to present later, so. Um, a couple of things, I, I focused a lot on the social, emotional aspect of the students that we have. Um, and one thing that I think I found really interesting and exciting is that a lot of the programs that they were talking about nationwide that are doing well are things that we're doing here. Um, one of them that I want to highlight that, um, I just learned about is the Sheridan Project, which is starting and that just talks about if our kids are hungry, um, you know, they're not going to be learning and now we're going to be offering the backpacks on the weekends to families that need it. So that was something really exciting. Um, just overall, one of the things that I heard, a quote that I think is, um, extremely appropriate and fitting is, um, the quote is that we have to be able to teach the students that we have, not the students we had or the students we wish we had. And again, just going back to that social, emotional stuff, um, I think it's just, like I said, where we're at right now is different than it was ten years ago, twenty years ago. And yes, we're moving forward, but understanding that our students are different now. Um, so a couple of the, um, as Ted said, there's lots of sessions and whatnot. I attended several sessions as well, um, but I wanted to highlight a couple. And one was a site visit to Pearl Cone. It's one of the twenty-one high schools in Nashville. And they were, um, recognized by President Barack Obama about four years ago for their turnaround. Um, they were one of the lowest achieving schools in the nation. And, um, the way that they did that, they, they strategized and, um, branded their schools very differently and, um, just had a huge turnover. But, um, now what they do is they have a freshman academy and then the students after their freshman year choose one route or another. They have three different options with different focuses like business, um, arts or, and I'm sorry, I'm going to forget the other one. But, um, so that pathway kind of directs them for their last three years and most of their learning is project-based, which was really exciting to see. So their English classes were, um, transferred over into the music classes, the lyrics, and they actually had a studio at the school, um, their own record label, which they've produced some music. And of course, it's Nashville, um, they have those opportunities, which is a lot, you know, very unique to Nashville. But it was pretty, it was very exciting to see. Um, some of the things that Ted talked about were highlighted at, um, Pearl Cone as well. And that was just the culture. The culture needed to change and, um, they did a lot of student engagement and, um, their extracurricular activities, they opened up a lot of opportunities. They had three sports teams, I want to say five years ago, and now they're up to like thirteen. So they've, I mean, just all of that stuff is producing much higher, um, graduation rates and everything else. Um, so then, um, I also attended some sessions on the parent engagement and they emphasized the use of technology, um, and communicating with parents. Um, some of the other things that I, the breakout sessions were about student involvement, um, and initiatives and having the students' voices be part of the plans for the school. Um, I had an opportunity to meet one young lady from, um, she was from New Hampshire and she was a student council representative, um, and she was actually at the conference as well. So it was really, um, she was a student representative, I'm sorry, on the school board. It was pretty exciting and I think that's, um, just one of the other exciting things going on. Um, one other session that I attended was titled rigorous academics is not enough to close the achievement gap. And that was actually, um, put on by Roseville, Roseville area schools. And they have equity vision as kind of their theme. Um, a lot of different strategies that they're putting in place. Um, they're being very student-centric and cultural competence is their focus. Um, one of the strategies that they used was that, um, many of the staff that were, that were able and willing started to mentor youth in the district and they really had an opportunity to see them at a different level. Um, and not, you know, some of the teachers come from very different backgrounds than the students that they have now. And so understanding, um, what their day-to-day life was like really kind of helped them in the classroom then. Um, another one that I went to was, uh, a presentation from, it was one of the most exciting ones because it was put on by students, of course. Sorry, not of course, but it was. Um, Fresno Unified School District had a student-led initiative, um, and that also impacted the cultural change in the district. Uh, the message was humankind be both. And again, this all came from the students. They ended up producing videos, um, they had bracelets, T-shirts and it was just really, um, anti-bullying, but in a different way. It was the positive version of the anti-bullying message. So it was pretty neat. Um, also, one last thing is that I attended the Hermitage, um, site visit and that's President Andrew Jackson's home. Um, Aaron Adams is the Director of Education there. And they have a project called the Rachel Initiative and that's where they bring history to life. So they actually do, um, video conferencing sessions for history teachers and they have it for the age-appropriate curriculum. They have first through eighth grade. Um, and they're able to talk to the teacher ahead of time and then, um, develop a plan with the teacher. And it's, it was a really neat, um, it was a neat opportunity to see that actually happen. And that's pretty much it. So I do have some things that I should have probably passed around already, but if you would like to take a look, it's about the Hermitage and then, um, Pearl Cone. So if anyone had any questions, certainly ask me. I wanted to keep it a little bit short. Like I said, I see the time, so, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Okay, moving on to staffing, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. A portal will be presented with information about staffing for fifteen, sixteen year. Presenter is Lindsay and Bill.
Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. I handed out, um, a couple of minutes before the board meeting, um, preliminary staffing. I just wanted to point out that this is extremely confidential. Staff have not been notified. Um, we're still trying to fine-tune our staffing for next school year, but we just want to keep the board informed of where we're at at this point. Um, back in January, the board did adopt a resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions, look for efficiencies. And administration has been busy meeting in January, February, March and April. Um, we've had many, many staffing meetings. Um, tonight is a draft of the resolution that will be coming forward at a future board meeting and also the breakdown of where we're looking at right now for reductions and where there might be additions um, per building and per program. Again, I just cannot stress enough how confidential this information is. Um, staff will be notified before their name does show up, um, to the board. But right now, we're still trying to figure out the budget and where we're going to go forward with that. I just wanted to point out that right now we do look at the numbers that we can project. So for example, there might be a cut to kindergarten with the anticipation that those students will show up and then we will have to add a section back in. But right now, we can only base things on the numbers that we know of, um, for next school year. And also in the future, when you see names come through, there may be more names on the list than what is shown in cuts because that will include staff that are cut who might be on a variance and also staff that'll be cut for performance. They do come through in one resolution, so we don't divide them out. So, um, Stanford showing that. So, Stanford's showing that these people are cut for performance, these people are cut for numbers. So, I'll give you a chance to look through it, and then when you're all done, we will collect everything back to Superintendent Kelly. And I was also going to point out, this is an annual process that we do come forward with these resolutions.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We'll give people just a minute to digest, and then we'll move forward to action items.
I've said to a few members, and I'll say tonight, if you have any questions about any of this, don't hesitate to contact me, and we'll be happy to meet or talk on the phone or email. Thank you.
I have just one question, if we need to look at this more in depth, can we contact you on that as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, I'll get you guys to handle those this way, and then... Next up, our first action item is the Highland Parking and Bus Reconfiguration. Bill?
Chairman Larkin, Directors of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. As you know, our last meeting, I gave you a bid tab of where our bids came in on our Highland Bus Loop. Tonight, I'm going to go through a couple more things in detail, because I think there were some questions at the time of exactly what the project was. We had talked about the project a few months ago and what we were going to do, but I'm going to take a couple extra minutes tonight, so everybody understands what this money is going for. Okay, first, again, we're here to create worlds of opportunity for every learner here, and I think when we look at our core values, we're really looking at some innovation and community when we look at our bus loop, our safety of our students, when we're trying to separate our buses from our, from our students being dropped off with their parents. Again, we had five bidders, and you can see that Minnesota Roadways was our low bidder at three hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty, with an alternate which was lighting, about twenty-five-eight fifty. I'm going to ask the board this evening to accept the bid from Minnesota Roadways, both the contract and the alternate. But before we go to any type of motion, I wanted to talk about the project a little bit. Now, I put this also in your board packets, maybe you can see a little better, because it is maybe a little difficult to see. But the highlighted areas on this map are places that will be changed as we're doing the project this summer. So, for starters, we're going to have a large, separated bus loop for student drop-off, and that'll be, you can see on the top, which is the east side of the building, and then to the south, and that's along the new addition down on that end, the kindergarten addition. That will be the main door that the students come in off the buses. And there's, this is very similar to what we did over at Columbia Academy, where we separated the buses to the side and kept them away from the cars. Now, as you look at the, we, right now, we have a horseshoe that comes in around by the high school and back out, or by the elementary. You see that we're going to add a cut across for the high school. So, the high school, when you come into the high school, you come in the same place you do now, but then as you come around that horseshoe, you will cut back over to the same place you came in. So, that the horseshoe would just be for the high school. And you can see, across the street then, we are moving the entrance into our parking lot, so we have a true intersection for the parking lot. So, we're directly across from the high school entrance. And then, now, the old exit, where you used to drive out of the parking lot, out of the horseshoe, that will be the entrance for our parents to come into Highland. And there'll be all brand-new parking along in front of the building for drop-off for students. So, I mean, there's going to be a small bit of congestion, just like we have at the middle school when everybody's leaving, because everybody's going out the same driveway, but it's really worked well down there. We haven't had those close calls with kids running between buses. I think it's going to work very, very well, and we're very excited, of course, that we come in so far under our estimates on this project. Anyway, it's just great news. So, this will start right after Summer Academy is done. So, right after the Fourth of July, this project will be done, it'll take us about six weeks, so we'll be done by the middle of August, be ready for school to start. And then with that being said, then I just, I need a motion to accept that bid from Minnesota Roadways and with the alternate.
I'll move that forward.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, actually, I do have one question. How are we going to, I mean, I know Summer Academy, Summer Academy is a huge event here, but what about the activities over at the Family Center and stuff? How are we going to, is this whole parking lot going to be removed? I mean, because I do believe Adventure Club and everything runs out of there.
By far, the majority of all our activities this summer have been moved to Columbia Academy and Valley View Elementary School, along with our full summer school program.
Okay.
Okay, and our special ed program. There will be, there's still access to this building, we just, they just can't drive up and park in front of the building. They can still walk up the sidewalk and come in for our employees, and there's going to be a couple of small projects still here, but they'll have to walk up instead of park off, you know, drop off at the curb.
Okay, so the Adventure Club and some of the other, the Family Center activities are just going to be running out of a different building?
Yeah, over at the Valley View Elementary School.
All of them will be over at Valley View, okay.
And I guess maybe just to point out too, we are going to run the summer school a little differently, where it will be earlier too. It'll be actually running the same time as Summer Academy.
Is the plan to start this after Summer Academy, or will it be?
Yeah, the plan is to start this immediately after Summer Academy, which is right after the Fourth of July. So, it'll start the week right after the Fourth. So, we'll have six weeks.
I've had a question about where the money is coming for this, is this from the levy money?
This, this money is going to come from the new capital, the capital project levy we put in place last fall. So, the three hundred fifty-two thousand will come out of that million dollars that we're levying for that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So, if we agree to this, then we agree to this layout?
Yes.
And the drop-off is kind of like the Columbia Academy drop-off?
Very, very similar, where the main door for our children coming off of buses will be on the side and towards the back, the back entrance of the building.
Okay, that would be over here?
Over on, it'd be on the east, east side of the building to the south end.
Okay, because one thing I experienced with Columbia Academy is getting back out, it kind of, it kind of jams up, you know?
It does jam up, especially, especially in the afternoon. Afternoon is worse than the morning, because the morning, people don't all come at the same time. The afternoon, everybody's there at the same time, so it's a little more of an issue.
The reason being is because that's kind of a, it's a walking area too, with the buses, but are we going to need like, you know, you know, an officer out there directing traffic, just like Columbia Academy?
We have an officer that is here. If you, if you've been here in the morning, we have someone directing traffic out of the horseshoe, getting the buses and parents out, both at Highland and at the high school, and we do the same thing in the afternoon.
So, is the plan to continue to use those officers, directors, traffic directors?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it actually works very well. You have somebody out in the street and stop traffic and get people out of the driveway. It works very well, we really haven't had any big complaints, and it's, I mean, since, especially when we first, when I first started here, it was pretty congested, but it's, it's working out very well.
I have interactions at both of the schools, you know, as far as that, and you're right, there's, there's a bit of a blockage, or it slows down on the, at Columbia Academy, but with someone out there, it actually keeps it moving pretty good, so. And you're not dealing with the traffic light issue, light issue at the high school that you are when you're bringing people out of Columbia Academy to go to Central. Oftentimes, things are backed up just because of that, so you got through traffic up on Forty-Ninth, so.
Yeah, I guess, when you look back at Columbia Academy, and it really is working very well. If you try to think back about three years, it was really, it was very difficult to get buses out of that school and get, keep them on time in any sort of way, because sometimes they'd be waiting for ten minutes to get out of there and get across that stoplight.
And I would have just expected that, you know, on your way out, there would have been a different, you know, just for buses, and then the drop-off would be separate than the actual bus line, you know, for the dropping off the kids, you know what I mean?
Well, we're looking on two things, there really, there's no more space on the, on the east side, and it would just, the cost was, would be so exorbitant, we couldn't afford it. So, this is, this is kind of a compromise to make it work, and it really separates the cars from the buses.
I think the really important, the important aspect of this is it's really going to keep, it's going to keep the kids out of the paths of the cars, because they're going to be completely, it's so much, this looks so much safer, and it really works pretty well over at the Academy. I don't think that there's a school district out there that doesn't have an issue when school lets out with the traffic congestion and buses, and it's nice that we actually have enough space to put in all those parking places at the front of Highland, that's going to be actually really nice.
Yeah, that's actually going to be a very nice improvement.
Yeah, because what I mean, we're cutting across, nobody's using the sidewalks, everybody cuts across the lawn as it is, so.
That's right, and they're walking between buses to do it.
And they're walking between buses to do it, yes.
I like the, I like the high school makeup, I do like that, you know, because it kind of separates it from Highland. I mean, that, that looks a lot better, a lot safer too.
We're a little bit off, but we're, what we're looking, you're looking for us to prove is the bid for the contract as opposed to proving the plan.
The reason I asked, I added the plan tonight, because there seemed to be some confusion when we talked about it a couple of weeks ago. But we did present this plan here a couple of months ago, but it seemed to be a lot of confusion. So, I thought, well, we'll look at it again, so you have a better understanding of what we're doing. But tonight, yeah, we're asking for a motion to accept the bids from Minnesota Roadways.
Just want to clarify that. Any other discussion, Ted?
Just one question, do you know how many parking spaces would be lost with this?
Right offhand, I do not. We didn't, we didn't really worry about losing a few parking spaces, because right across the street, we have a brand-new parking lot that is not full, not even closed.
Okay.
So, the staff members can use that parking lot.
Thank you.
There's nothing else to approve the bid for the parking and bus configuration? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? More than curious.
Thank you.
And last action item is the Inoka County Broadband Renewal Resolution. This is, I think Brian was up here last week talking about that. This is going to be a resolution that we'll end up having to read, but if you want to...
I'm kind of hoping I'll be the fastest one. Chair Larkin, members of the board, our Directors of the board, Superintendent Kelly. So, before you have a resolution, you know, I talked about the Inoka County Broadband Project, what that was, what that is, when it started approximately five years ago. We're still living under the same agreement, and I talked about some of the benefits of that. This is just to extend that agreement. So, each agreement is in a five-year term, so it's, it's really amending the term of that agreement, so it extends for the next five years. So, again, the main benefits from us are that increased bandwidth connection that we need for our digital classrooms, and also making sure that we have the redundancy in place, so we can maintain that access. So, it's just as important to have it available all the time as is to have the quantity that we need. So, those are the two of the biggest benefits that we're receiving right now. So, before you, we're looking, recommending an approval to amend the agreement, so the amendment is in front of you, and the resolution is in front of you, and then the entire agreement, as well as in the board packet.
I'm looking for, Ted, moving a motion to move it forward a second?
Second.
Grant, and I'll read the resolution, and then if there's any questions or discussion. Resolution of support for high-speed broadband connectivity, whereas Inoka County wishes to amend its agreement with the Columbia Heights Public Schools for connectivity services on the Connect-Inoka County network, whereas paragraph seven, no, twelve, modification of said agreement provides that "Any materials, alterations, modifications, or variations of the terms of this agreement shall be valid and enforceable only when they have been reduced to writing as an amendment and signed by the parties, and now therefore be resolved that the Columbia Heights Public Schools agrees to the changes set forth in the Inoka County Contract Number Two Zero One One-Dash-Zero One One Seven Amendment Number One. Be it further resolved that Columbia Heights Public Schools agrees to the new term of the commencement date of August seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, and the new expiration date of August sixteenth, two thousand twenty of the agreement. Be it further resolved that the Columbia Heights Public Schools recognizes that broadband through Inoka County optical fiber will be a long-term benefit to all citizens." Conversation, questions?
So, just so I'm clear, the only term that's being changed is the effect or the dates?
Correct.
And we've already approved this agreement before as a district?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, being that's a resolution, Laura, if you would do a roll call, please?
Lewis.
Yay.
Nichols.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Landwehr.
Yes.
Meyer.
Aye.
Thank you. That's it, thanks, Brian. Board topics.
It's one thing I forgot to mention, that just in the interest of transparency, the cost of the trip for the NSBA was about thirty-one hundred per person, so hopefully, we got more value than that out of the conference, I believe we did, so.
I said one thing I wanted to touch on, I mentioned it earlier, but the Teacher of the Awards, Teacher of the Year Celebration. When I sat there, I listened to all the different people that were nominated, and it just told me what a great bunch of staff we have of educators throughout, I mean, there was, from every single school, there were nominations, and Coleman Nemraus said it himself, that it wasn't, you know, everyone else was as deserving as he was, and that's, I believe that to be, now, the personal Coleman, but I believe that to be an accurate statement, that we have some phenomenal teachers in our district, and that's one of the things that I noticed when it came to that awards thing, so. Anyone else got anything?
I was just thinking about the busing, could we maybe get some updates about that, the, like, how the parking is going to go over? Because we didn't prove that, right?
We wouldn't, that we would approve the bid, and then administration takes care of the design.
Design and stuff, okay.
The information that we received tonight was for information for us, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I still wanted to just follow up on, I believe it's two meetings ago, I would ask, or mention how important it would be to have contracts, all the various contracts of the different units available to the school board members, so I'd like to continue the follow-up on that.
The contracts are online.
They are?
Yes, they are.
On the district website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we will adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-three.